I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission, October 27, 2020, at 6:00 p.m., regular meeting. We do have a quorum. Our first item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the September 29, 2020, regular meeting.
Make motion to accept or submitted?
We have a motion to accept or submitted by Mr. Coates.
Our second.
We have a second by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. This time, I'm going to turn everything over to the council to do item number one.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will chair this portion of the meeting for purposes of electing officers for the next year for the Planning Commission. Item number one under other business is first motion to nominate and elect a chairman for a one-year term. And the floor is open for nominations.
Our nominate Earl Garvin.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Cole, with a motion to nominate Mr. Garvin as chairman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Who made the... Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coates. Motion is in a second. Any conversation, discussion? Hearing none. Let's go ahead and vote on that. All in favor of electing Mr. Garvin as chairman for a one-year term signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is motion to nominate and elect a vice chairman for a one-year term.
Make a motion to recommend Ms. Sanders.
Okay, Ms. Sanders, is there a second?
Our second.
I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Lee with the second. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I declare the motion carried. Final item is item number three, motion to nominate and elect a secretary for a one-year term. The floor is open.
Our nominate Alderman Graham Coates.
Okay, Alderman Coates has been nominated. Is there a second?
I'll second, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Garvin. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone. Our first item of new business, final plat, Portico Place, Section Two, Phase One, requested by SEC, Inc., 78 proposed lots on 36.68 acres. Property located at Blair Road and Portico Place Road. Tax map 29, parcel 20.04. PDR Plan Density Residential Zoning District. Property owned by Blair Road LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a request for approval of final plat. This is Portico Place, Section Two, Phase One, and they're asking for approval of 78 lots with this phase. You can see here, this is a property that lies off of Blair Road. If you come to the end of Sam Ridley Parkway and take a right, you go around these curves on Blair, and it's the development to the left. They've been moving a lot of rock out there for the last several weeks, and there's a picture of the site about a week ago. So, this is, if you remember, this development came to the Planning Commission in September of 2017, so three years ago, a little over three now. And at that time, they rezoned it to PDR with a base zoning of R1. And the... At that time, they asked for all single-family homes, so the development is entirely single-family. There's no townhomes or apartments. 114 lots ultimately will be in Laverne, and 16 lots will be on the Smyrna side. And you can see here on the plat, you probably noticed that the line between Smyrna and Laverne is right here on the plat. Zoom in a little bit. So, the 16 lots on the Smyrna side will be roughly in this area. And they are also, as part of that approval in 2017, they are responsible for widening the curves and softening them somewhat there on Blair Road. And finally, the lot widths range from 41 feet wide to 46 feet wide. And again, there's no multifamily development on this site. There were no technical items two weeks ago at the workshop, so that will complete the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board for the applicant or for staff?
Can the applicant walk us through as far as the changes that were made since two weeks ago?
Please, sir. If you don't mind, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
John Miner with SEC, 850 Middleton Street Boulevard in Murphysboro.
Thank you, sir. The mayor's question was, could you go over the things that were changed?
Yes. So, we discussed three things at the workshop. The first was including all right-of-way dedication on Blair Road with this plat, which we have done, and made it a little bit more clear. The second thing was adding additional right-of-way. With the rezoning, we had promised 10 feet. We show that, and we've added an additional two feet. The remaining, I think it's 12 feet, was just kept in place for a sign. By the time you add a sign, the footer for it, landscaping, you need about 14 feet, so two feet was about all we could give. And lastly, we added a mail kiosk. This was originally approved prior to mail kiosk being required. It is now to the south of Lot 15, and I have submitted a little site plan, so to speak, to Adam for his review. We added four parking spaces and a handicap space to serve the entire development.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
So, all the lots are buildable. There's no... All the lots that you laid out are buildable. There'll be no variance required. They're all ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? No questions or comments. We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept or submitted?
We have a motion to accept or submitted by Mr. Coates.
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Lee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Next item on our agenda. Amendment to the final plat, Sand Hill Village, requested by Womble and Associates. 31 existing residential lots on 8.06 acres. Property located on Cash Court, tax map 14, parcel 40. PDR Plan Density Residential Zoning District. Property owned by Abnan Shreeman. Mr. Logan, please.
Thanks. So, this is Sand Hill Village, located south, on the south side of Sand Hill Road. And currently, there's 31 existing lots here. And you can see, this is a commercial lot. There's a little bit of different base zoning in here, but this got approved for retail building a few months back, and then the street heads south and then goes into... It's not really cul-de-sac, but it's a loop at the bottom here of the development. So, the purpose of this plat is to do an amendment and move this property line approximately eight feet. So, eight feet of Sand Hill Village will be moved to the adjacent parcel, which is the Bowling subdivision that's coming up next on the agenda. So, it's a fairly minor amendment, and they're gonna... If you originally remember, Bowling subdivision had requested to have some ingress egress from Fergus Road, and through the Planning Commission, it was decided that the best design would be to move that access off of Sand Hill Village. So, you'll see that in the next item, but that's the purpose for the amendment. And there were no technical items at the workshop, so that completes the report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Coates?
I'll make a motion to accept or submitted.
We have a motion by Mr. Coates to accept or submitted. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item. Final plat, Bowling subdivision, requested by Womble and Associates. Four proposed residential lots on 1.38 acres. Property located at 299 Fergus Road. Tax map 14, parcel 27, and PO map 14K. Group A, parcel 34. R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. And PDR Plan Density Residential Zoning District. Property owned by Abnan Shreeman. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So, this is the Bowling subdivision, and this subdivision, they're proposing four lots on roughly 1.44 acres, give or take. And you can see, as we talked about in the last item of Sand Hill Village, with this development, they'll construct a new street that will come off of Cash Court and will serve all four of these lots. This property is zoned R1, and it is not being rezoned. It is staying R1. So, each of these lots will be at least 15,000 square feet in total. And this is a photo of the curve on Fergus, and then this is a photo of the brick house, older brick house that's on the property that they will remove or demolish. I'm not exactly sure what the method will be, but that will... That house will go away, and that's where there'll be four new lots, and they can build four new homes. There were no technical items. There is one item from Mr. Leach that says construction plans are in review, and other than that, there's no outstanding items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Mr. Leach, any comment on that, sir?
Mr. Womble corrected the few minor items that I needed in the construction plans, so they'll be approved.
Thank you, sir. With that, do we have any questions or comments from the board?
We just want to say, for the property owner and the engineer, I do appreciate them getting general notes nine and 10 on there. I think that really helps with this, to restrict that access onto Fergus Road.
Absolutely.
So, thank you for that.
Very good. Thank you, mayor.
And I would also like to thank you for the sidewalks.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept or submitted.
We have a motion to accept or submitted by Mr. Coates.
Our second.
We have a second by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item. Final plat, Fred Waldron Subdivision, Section Three, re-subdivision of lots 15 and 16, requested by Elkin Surveying. Two existing lots on 1.91 acres. Property located at 130 Elm Street. Tax map 17M, Group A, parcel one and two. R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Property owned by Glenn D. Buchanan and Brad A. Dyer. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. This is a request for an amendment to the Fred Waldron subdivision, Section Three. And these are two lots that lie on Elm Street. The address is 130 Elm Street. And each lot is close to an acre, .94 acres and .97 acres. And the request is to move the boundary line. This is part of a sale of property that is planned, and so in preparing to put this property on the market, they discovered that there's an issue with an accessory structure with the garage. And so, the purpose was try to move the boundary of those lots to help with the location of that accessory structure. And so, it's a pretty minor adjustment as far as the plat is concerned, just a request to move the line. And there's a photo of the property on the south side of the property. There weren't any technical items from the workshop, and I'm not aware of anything new with it. So, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Is there a representative here this evening?
Yes, sir.
Would you state your name and address for the record, sir?
Doyle Elkins. Elkin Surveying Company, 520 West Lytle Street, Suite B, Murphysboro.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Did this went to the Board of Zoning Appeals, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Logan, could you give us an update on that?
Yes, it did, and the Board of Zoning Appeals considered a variance for the... It's basically a garage. I'll take you back and show you this structure. So, I don't know how familiar you all are with variances or what the enabling legislation says about them, but, you know, we get... Or the city gets requests from time to time for people to put structures closer to the line than they should. So, here's the structure that apparently, right now, it sits on the property line, and this is a lightened photo of it. So, basically, when you're looking at a variance, it's because of something wrong with the lot. It's not because somebody generally, and this happens in every city in Tennessee, somebody brings a variance and says, "This is costing me money. It's costing my family money. I can't afford this." That's not how variances work, and so, as a planner, you're trained to give the answer that it doesn't meet that criteria. And so, a good example of one that would would be if somebody wanted a five-lane Elm Street, and they took a third of the front yard. Well, now, they've got a really... There's something wrong with the lot. So, if it's a road widening, if there's a creek that runs through the yard, if it's on the side of a mountain, other than that, nothing ever meets the criteria for variance. And so, that's what happened in the Bozeman meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments from the board for the applicant?
Did he want to say something?
Well, I'm concerned that if you guys are gonna deny this, I would rather defer and then go to maybe a workshop, because whether or not they get a zoning change for a 10-foot setback, and hardship is in the claws from Tennessee, and this was built way before zoning came about, and my client knew nothing about the property line encroachment until we did the survey. Or maybe he was told about it at some time when the neighbor previous to the owner, Mr. Beecham, was there. They knew there might be some kind of problem. But now, there's a serious problem there, and he can't sell the property unless we get a subdivision that puts the property line in a place that allows him to do it. So, we're trying to figure out a way to get his property sold, and...
A little stuck at the moment.
His neighbor's not willing to give up 10 feet. We've already been down that road. He's really, you know, doing Mr. Dyer a favor by selling him the one foot. I mean, I guess he could tear the building down, but we... I don't know why you would want to do that.
Understandable. So, variance has not been issued at this point, correct, Mr. Logan?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's where we're at. I do believe that it would be best if you did defer.
Okay.
We can vote on it. Without the variance, it doesn't meet the criteria, so is that a recommendation that you can live with?
I would... If it would be best for my client to defer to next month's meeting, I would rather do that. Yes, sir.
Well, let's go with deferral, and then we'll discuss it at workshop and try and work there together.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna call that item deferred and move on to the next one. Item number eight. Subdivision acceptance, Lakewoods, Phases Seven, Eight, Nine, and Ten. Property located off Hollendale Road, requested by Womble and Associates. R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. This is a request for subdivision acceptance for the Lakewood subdivision that is located in the north side of Laverne off of Stones River Road. And you can see the property here on the image. The... There's a pointer. So, we're talking about this area here. It's a fairly large area. So, that's sort of a zoomed-in shot there, and you can see, this is off of Hollendale Road, and one of the side roads is Chantara. You can see a photo here of one of the detention areas that's located in the subdivision. And then, here's the zoning. So, you can see, this is R2 zoning, and so, those would be 10,000 square foot lots for straight R2 zoning. At this point, Mr. Leach and Mr. Randolph have been going through the checklist, and they informed me about a month ago that this would be one of the candidates for acceptance, and that's how it was put on the agenda. So, as far as I've been notified, those checklists are, I guess, nearing completion. I'll let Mr. Leach speak to that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Mr. Leach, if you'd touch on that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. All stormwater and engineering items have been corrected. They patched the road. There were two items that I believe the contractor overlooked, which are relatively minor, just some cracking in sidewalks that will need to be repaired. With that in mind, just remember that tonight's vote is a recommendation to the board on acceptance, not an actual acceptance.
Thank you.
Once again, both relatively minor, and I have assurance, both in the form of surety from the owner. We have the bond still, and it'll only go down to a maintenance bond once everything's fixed. So, that's where we're at.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, with the engineer being here, I'd like him to just stand up and ask a few questions, if he would, please.
Please, sir. Mr. Womble, if you'd be second, sir. Name and address for the record, sir.
Danny Womble, 40 Middleton Street, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Womble, if you'd just explain with the recent rains, how the drainage area, how that functioned, and did it meet your expectations, and did it work appropriately?
Yes, it did. The four phases, Phase Seven is a cul-de-sac that's around Muth Court and has some lots that face Hollendale. All drains down to a somewhat regional detention basin that's at intersection or near the intersection of Hollendale and Stones River. And it's actually located in Phase Eight. Then Phase Eight, Phase Nine, and Phase Ten all drain down to the same catch basin. Part of the punch list work was making repairs to some of the drainage ditches in the area, but all the drainage ditches and the pipes and the inlets are working as they were intended in the design, and all are in good shape. The detention pond itself was actually sized larger than what the design regs require. The design here is for 25-year storm and to be able to safely pass larger storms. This particular detention pond was designed for 100-year storm, and as outlets, it's got 12 injection wells that were approved by the state and permitted by the state. There were actual new drilled injection wells, and then it has another injection well in the existing sinkhole that was located in the detention pond. And then, there are actually two other injection wells within the drainage way, the drainage ditch that drains down to the pond. So, we've watched this pond over the last probably three years since it's been constructed. Every time there's been a large rainfall event, when I've been around town, I've looked at it. Abnan lives here. He's looked at it at every rainfall event when he was in town. This last, more recent, larger rainfall event, it received more water than it's ever received before since it was constructed. It did not overtop the levees. The injection wells took all of the water, so it functioned great. It functioned just like we had hoped it would when we designed it. So, I recommend that you accept it. It has actually more injection wells than were required, in my opinion, for the design, to meet the design storm, but we intentionally put more in it so that it could pass these larger storm events. This last storm was probably close to 100-year storm, maybe even more. I understand there were a lot of problems around town with flooding, but we didn't have any flooding in the subdivision with this larger event.
Very good.
Mr. Leach, just a question for you. So, once we accept it, do you see any issues that we will have with that detention pond in the near future or future, shall I say?
Well, the detention pond never actually comes into city maintenance. It's part of the HOA's maintenance responsibilities, just like every other detention pond throughout the city. As far as maintenance goes, it is probably one of the easier to maintain because it's rock-bottomed. It will probably never have to be mowed, which, good or bad, aesthetically, I won't go into that. The injection wells all have a... Basically, a rock liner around each of them, which more or less makes them clog-proof unless there's a significant amount of sediment that somehow gets in the pond, which is pretty unlikely, given that the entire subdivision is already stabilized. So, yeah, it's probably the lowest maintenance pond in Laverne, at least at this moment in time.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? With that, we'll entertain a motion to send a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to Mayor and Alderman. Is that correct?
Our motion that we submit a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
We have a motion for favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman by Mayor Cole. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Adoption of Planning Commission rules and procedure. I believe I will turn this one over to Mr. Coates.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm just gonna talk and make some comments, and I guess, I know we don't have a ton of time, but I do want to get some discussion among members of the Planning Commission about your thoughts on the overall goal in these rules, just so I can have a good idea of basically what everybody wants. One of my points that I'm gonna make is that we have a set of rules now in draft form. I think you may have a set there. That gets into a lot of detail with respect to the operation of the meetings, the function of the meeting. And at least in my mind, it might make sense to, instead of doing that, to simply adopt Robert's rules with respect to how the meeting is run, but in terms of deadlines and times when they're supposed to be, like when a submittal is due and things of that nature, that that would be more appropriate for the Planning Commission rules, to adopt specific rules for, whereas the operation of the actual meeting be consistent with like the Board of Mayor and Alderman, for example, which follows Robert's rules. My concern is, is that if we have different boards in the city that are operating under different rules, that that can create a little bit of confusion sometimes. But anyway, I'm just throwing that out there to get feedback.
Very good point. Mayor Cole?
And I think that the goal with this wasn't to necessarily set up rules for the board to operate under, to conduct the meeting, but it was for clarification purposes due to like things like the number of deferrals applicants can have. That's something that this board has worked with and kind of implemented, but there was nothing in writing. And so, that, for me, there's concern there whenever we have unwritten rules that we're going by because then someone can say, "Well, I don't feel that's right. Of course, we go to court," and then all we can say is, "Well, it's an unwritten rule." That's not the most professional thing to set forward before a judge.
Yes, sir.
And I have to agree with the mayor on that, basically the same point. That's kind of the way I feel we're going with it as well.
And, you know, you... I mean, and there's absolutely nothing wrong with setting a rule saying, "This is how many deferrals you get." The one issue, and again, it may never, ever come up, but, you know, as it stands now, we don't have a rule, so you could grant as many deferrals as you want or not. There are state laws that require you to act on plats and things of that nature within a certain amount of time. Obviously, that's gonna control, but if you adopt a formal rule that says you get two deferrals or three or whatever, you're sort of backing yourself in a corner at that point, where I don't know that you necessarily have to do that. If you want to do that, you can. You can say, "We're gonna have a rule that says no more than X number." But as it stands now, you don't have to do that. You can grant deferrals or not based on whatever unique set of facts come before the board. You may decide there's a reason why you want to grant a fourth deferral, but if you have a rule that says you're capped at three, then your hands are tied. And again, it's fine. I'm not saying good or bad. I'm not, I'm not saying good or bad in one way or the other. I just want everybody to think through what your options are.
Yeah, I think that, and there was some discussion about when items that are on the agenda in between the workshop and the actual meeting, as far as setting up basically guidelines, so that if they're wanting a deferral, it's not a, we're at a meeting and they're at a deferral, or they're contacting Bo right before the meeting for a deferral, along with establishing those rules so that we stay consistent with everybody on deferrals and we don't have, you know, anyone come back and say that they're not given a fair treatment here.
So would the board, and I'm sorry, but would y'all, so would you be interested in having a rule that adopts Robert's rules, but then have carve-outs, for example, for the deferral? Is that sort of what you're saying?
I think that's the
So to conceptualize it, would be follow Robert's rules and then carve out a couple of items. One is training.
Okay.
Because I think that needs to be in there. Two is the public hearings, because that needs to be defined. And then the motions, voting, deferrals, and withdrawals. I suppose those are the three that catch my eye outside Robert's rules. Those are the three that I think we need to encapsulate.
So let, let me ask, because I think our training falls under the state, does it not?
It does.
And so would that be to add something or just a reference to that?
Well, I mean, that's, and that's, that's sort of the question is, you know, state law controls now and mandates that you have the training. You don't have to have any, any rule in addition to state law, but, but, but you can. You just have to meet their minimum requirement. So we can, we can address the training, the withdrawal, and specifically Alderman, Coats, what you're, on the training part, are you?
I mean, I just want to encapsulate, obviously, to cover what, ensure that people realize you have to meet the state minimums. The minimums, you can do more, but at least the minimums are what you need to have to do. And obviously, that needs to be recorded, and then obviously kept by the city for, in case it's asked for.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and in state law, it's, it's very specific on the training that the Secretary of the Planning Commission has the file on the training records and keeps those for a specified amount of time. So I know that's some of the draft language that you've got in there currently.
The, I guess the only thing I can add to any of all that is, on the deferral item, we should just kind of protect ourselves if it's not something that's the city's fault, the individual's fault, if it's state, federal, something of that nature paperwork-wise, we need to have an avenue for, you know, to keep going, because, you know, just like with dealing with the gas company, Murfreesboro Road, we've had items go on for several months that we've had to defer, or if the Planning Commission chooses to defer on, on an item, just make sure that we've got a way to cover ourselves and the applicant, to make sure that everybody's protected. Questions, comments?
I would say if we, there, I would almost say using Robert's rules of order, we would have two types of deferrals. You have a board deferral, which this body can make at any time about any thing that we're voting on. And then you have an applicant deferral where they're requesting it to be deferred for so many, you know, for whatever period of time. And that would be the one that I would like to see, that, that, that number put on. The board still can vote and do its own decision if, if they want to, because that's, that's normal with Robert's rules of order, as we see with BOMA, so.
Yes.
So, okay, that, that's helpful. So, so you're saying, Mayor, that you want the applicant to be limited in the amount of times they can unilaterally defer?
Yes.
That they, they don't need anybody's permission? They get three, three deferrals? All they have to do is let Bo know, and then, okay.
Yes, and they, they would have, I would say you would get with Bo as far as what that timeframe is.
Okay.
And, or what that deadline is, and then go from there.
Perfect.
But there needs to be in writing, because that's, we've called it before. Major, can we?
That's, that's why we're here.
I totally agree. Yeah, no, that, that makes perfect sense now.
Very good.
Good point.
Any, Mr. Rettledge, Ms. Sanders?
No.
Any other comments or questions?
Clear as mud.
We gave you some homework, sir.
We'll have, we'll have a little draft next, next month.
Wonderful.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Coates.
Yes, sir.
And our final item is bonds and letters of credit update by Mr. Leach.
Mr. Chairman, in the back of your packet, you'll see our current bonds. The only thing that's really changed is a couple of our maintenance bonds that timed out. Those subdivisions have been inspected. And as I've been noting throughout the time, we're kind of getting low on buildable lots. Sitting here doing the math on it, and currently, looks like there's roughly three hundred and ninety lots left in Laverne, which on balance sounds like a lot, but if you figure that our population is right around forty thousand, that's less than one percent of the current population. Just as a side note to be aware.
Thank you, Mr. Leach.
That's all okay?
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.